Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. With the adoption of the agenda, is there any additions?
Madam Mayor, Administration, I'd like to add thirteen point eight, the Myex grant application. That's the one that was forwarded to council yesterday.
Thirteen point what?
Eight.
Eight. That's what I thought. Is there anything else? If not, could I please have someone move the agenda? Counselor Jessiman, all in favor? Carried. November fourteenth. Minutes. Just, did we find out anything about the dust investigation?
Madam Mayor, Haley reached out to Mr. Penny, and I believe Tyrell was going to meet him down there and just take a look at the extent of it, and then we'll get something back and reach out to the company about it.
Thank you. And the other one was the arena kitchen, did we get any applicants?
I believe there's at least one has come in. I did have somebody reach out to me about it. I'm not sure if there's any others that... The one came in, and I think Joanna's just placed them on Jenna's desk. Jen's back tomorrow.
Okay. If there's no errors, could I have someone move to adopt, please? Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried. The November twentieth Committee of Whole meeting, is there any discussion? If not, could I have someone move the minutes, please? Counselor Jessiman, all in favor? Carried. So I only attended one meeting between these two weeks, and that was the ready meeting on November twenty-third, and I believe that Andrew has forwarded the municipal... to the municipal CAOs to go through some feedback, council, if you could send it to council, please, on the documents for site selection, and they're looking for one more round of feedback from council.
We received that this afternoon, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So you have to go into the site, and actually, just all they're looking for is our site, not Rainbow's and McKenzie Counties, as they will do their own. And that's it. I had to leave the meeting early, so the deputy mayor might be able to give more information. If there's any questions? Seeing none, could I have someone move my report, please? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Deputy Mayor?
On November seventeenth, I attended the Northern Alberta Elected Leaders Meeting in Valleyview. Lots of discussion about wildfires in the area. Rob Barone, who's the head of EMS for the North Zone, did a presentation in the North Zone. The population's 450,000, which coincides with the geographic area, which is 450,000 square kilometers. There are between seventy-seven and eighty-one ambulances in this zone, spread over fifty-seven stations, nine supervisory units, or eight fixed wing, two rotary wing, one in Grand Prairie, one in Fort McMurray, and there are six hundred and twenty-five paramedic positions. They're currently at about a thirty percent vacancy in full-time paramedics. In that, in this zone, they did about eighty-six thousand ground movements per year, which is up about forty-four percent over the last seven years. Lots of discussion around turnaround times and things like that. Turnaround time is from when they get the call, they get the patient to the hospital or medical facility, and the ambulance is turned around, ready to go on the next call. Their goal is forty-five minutes, which they're currently not meeting, but that's their goal. It's not uncommon for them to have between ten and fifteen ambulances out of service at any given time, could be as high as twenty. They are on a three-year capital replacement for their units. Their goal is to replace sixty-five units a year due to supply chain issues over the last three years. In 2021, they received no new units, 2022, thirty-two, and year-to-date, 2023, they've received thirty-seven. So they're at about a hundred and thirty-plus deficit in replacing their units. They do have an incentive program now. It's a $25,000 sign-on for new paramedics. If they were to stay for three years, fifteen thousand for two years, and five thousand for one year. He had a bunch of statistics over the entire zone. I asked if there were ones particular to our area. He said they have all of that. I've got his business card, and if we reach out to him, he's more than prepared to provide statistics for our particular municipality. He's prepared to come and make a presentation as well. There were a total of two ministers and two MLAs who gave presentations. Minister Lowen was there, talked about 2.2 million hectares were lost in wildfires this year, which is about ten times the long-term average. He talked about some new strategies that they're going to introduce starting next year, including night flights for helicopters with night-vision cameras, talking about night firefighting on the ground. When the humidity and temperature drops, easier to have like a three-foot flame than a thirty-foot flame, so they're going to try that. He talked about ramping up some of the services, which I understand may now no longer be the case for the coming year, so hopefully that's not going to come to fruition. Minister Williams made a presentation. He did highlight that, for him, local issues always rank above his ministerial duties. He talked about the LaCrete Hospital is in the engineering phase. And then Ron Weave from Grand Prairie Wapiti was there, as was Nolan Dick from Grand Prairie. Sorry, and there was another MLA, Tanny Yao, from the Fort McMurray area, who's a parliamentary secretary, talked about some of those initiatives, also talked about healthcare delivery. The changes are... They're looking at thirteen advisory councils. There was question asked about how people can apply to get on those new councils, and there's no clear answer to that yet. On November twentieth, attended the special council meeting. On November twenty-first, attended the Upper Hay Regional Forest Public Advisory Group. Just got some updates to harvest plans for this coming winter, and then also attended the same thirty meetings the mayor wanted.
Any questions? Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Nothing on committees, and on November twentieth, I also attended the special council meeting.
Counselor Jessiman?
November, yeah, November the twentieth, the special council meeting. November twenty-first was Forest Capital of Canada, our first... My on, yeah, first meeting with the steering committee, so there were a number of people that showed up. It was a good first session, about two hours. Lots of cool things already planned. They're talking about having a bonfire in all the communities on a given night, and that they'll all be linked together via the media, some media source that they're working on, so that sounds like that might be the kickoff event for this, and so that's going to be coming up here soon. We get together on the fifth, start developing the schedule for all the events throughout the year, so once we have that, we'll get them out. But yeah, pretty exciting, and lots of good things already starting to come together, so. And that's it for meetings.
The fifth of December?
Fifth of December, yeah.
Any questions? Thank you. Counselor Lambert?
On November twentieth, I also attended the special council meeting, besides that I have no other committee meetings to report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Librian?
I also attended the special council meeting on the twentieth, and then on Saturday the twenty-fifth, I attended the Peace Library Systems Board meeting. That's all I have to report.
What was happening with Peace Library?
So this meeting was the election of the executive board and a couple of committees, and then unfortunately, I was in Zoom and got dropped off and couldn't reconnect before the end, so I missed about the last ten minutes, so I'm not sure what the last ten minutes was.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Welkey?
Madam Mayor, just the special council meeting on November twentieth, and no other meetings to report.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move the council report?
My report, I forgot.
Yep.
So Minister Lowen also said that his department is encouraging municipalities to apply for funding. They're recommending an eight-hundred-meter-wide fire guard around the community that they would like to see grazed in the future to keep it down. So I'm not sure how that would fit in with the towns' plans, but he was encouraging all municipalities to apply for funding for that. And apparently McKenzie County has already submitted, is the first municipality that's already submitted a significant plan.
So eight hundred meters, how big is that one you did outside of town? This year, the one you did outside?
Oh, the one inside town, yeah.
A half a mile?
So it, there's five million dollars for you that is in this fund. There's huge interest in it across the province, so five million dollars sounds like a lot, but it won't go very far, so as Boyd had mentioned, the county has proposal, but there's other municipalities that are going hard, too, as well, with their proposals. So this was also showcased in following 2019 fire by our minister Drierson at that time, and the program wasn't very successful, but there's a lot of interest now, and our ministers definitely going to continue to push it, so, yeah. I don't know if we want cows right on our doorstep in town.
His thought process was that they do these fire guards and then forget about them, and it grows up, and it's just quick ground for the fire to blow across, good fuel, so by grazing it, they want to keep it down, but eight hundred meter wide at some distance outside of high level, that's, I don't know how many, tens of thousands of cattle.
Counselor Welkey?
Yeah, I guess just on that note, regarding McKenzie County's application, they're a county that's, or they're a municipality that's very large. Was their application based on their communities, like a guard around their communities, or is it a guard around their municipality?
No, it's providing the guard around urban areas.
Urban areas within municipalities, so.
He didn't give details of what their application was. He just said they're the first to have submitted a...
Because, I guess, for most municipalities as well, that you would infringe on your neighboring municipalities, just trying to attempt this.
I would assume their biggest community at risk would be Zalman, so that would probably be their minority. There was the part of the issue near Fort McMurray, so.
Interesting.
That would be it. That's a guess on my part.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move these reports, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Council's action list. Any questions? No questions? Could I have someone move, please? Oh, you have questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, could we have an update on the fire service agreement with the Deneta, please?
I spoke with IDO Asils this morning, and he is speaking with Chief Fukunuso, who I think he expected back later this afternoon, about trying to get something together to get that signed.
Is there requirements for any further meetings at all, or is it literally signing?
This council's approved it, so it's... And my understanding is, I'm not exactly sure how the Act works, but because it's only for one community, I believe that the chief can sign the agreement without a motion of council, but that's the impression I'm left with, so.
Okay, thank you.
And Counselor Lambert?
Just an update on the land purchase application with the Powerwood Canada Corp. Any update on that?
Director Gavin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The latest update I have is still waiting on CN, so I do have just a short update that they are still interested in purchasing the land, but until they get approval from CN for the new sightings, that, I guess, that's really the stumbling block on proceeding right now. And then the individual that I was dealing with was, is away in Mexico until December sixth, I believe, so I'm going to reach back out to him when he gets back from his vacation.
Okay, thank you. And one more, did we, where do we leave off on the residential property purchase?
We're still dealing with helping infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, we've replied to them, we're working on. We haven't heard back, because I'm in the same boat that Director Gavin is. The individual I'm dealing with is on vacation right now.
Okay, thank you.
Well, seems we're asking questions. Have we heard anything back from McKenzie County on the joint application for the water for life?
Yes, they passed a motion to join the application, so we'll be putting that in with maybe a couple of others. That'll be our job over the next two days, is submit those applications.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. The events list. The parade was well-attended. The dog sleds were a hit. I didn't think you could tire out huskies, but I guess you can. So kudos to everybody that put that on. Any questions about the events? If not... Do I have a motion, please? Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried. The quarterly financials.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will answer any questions council may have.
Oh, Counsel, sorry, Counselor Anderson?
I have a question. Where are we on the RSSA contribution of a million dollars?
We have received it, so it just didn't hit the September thirtieth, the quarterly financials, but we do, we have received it, and it is deposited.
Thank you.
Counselor Welkey?
On that same note, what is the actual date that it should be received? Is it, like, is the next one, then, January?
No, so, well, our agreement does state that, it doesn't really say that we have to invoice it out, so we have invoiced it out the last couple of years, so we just need some clarification if they are going to submit the payment as per the agreement. It's usually by the end of July, or if we're going to continue invoicing it out.
If they're expecting an invoice.
If they're expecting an invoice, then we'll make sure that...
But the agreement is that it be paid on the last day of July every year?
I'm pretty sure that's what it does. Date is July is in the agreement. I'll double check.
There is a date that it's supposed to be submitted by.
Yeah, I think I read July.
I think it was July, yeah.
I think that gives them time to get their taxes out and, yeah, collected.
And in the past, we normally have invoiced McKenzie County with the RSSA, just because we also used to invoice for our capital project contributions, so I don't know if it's just a matter of habit for them to receive an invoice, so we'll have to double-check with their finance, if that's what their preferred is, but...
Deputy Mayor?
I can't recall right now off the top of my head, but there was a resolution in either late September or October.
They did a resolution. Yeah.
Any other discussion about the quarterly financials? Could I have someone move them, then, please? Counselor Jessiman, all in favor? Carried. Under Old Business twelve-one, request for hundred thou.
Madam Mayor, this is the, from a council rise and report, it's your committee of the whole. This is to proceed with an application under the Strategic Transportation Infrastructure Program for the Main Street project. The program will pay, will contribute fifty percent of the cost of the program.
Deputy Mayor?
I think it was my rising report.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. So the foundation to the sports complex.
Madam Mayor, this is also a rising report from your committee of the whole. I have reached out to the engineers that did the structural assessment about the engineering costs to proceed with designing repairs to the facility. I have not received that back. We'll try to have that for your budget meeting on Monday.
Train? Yes.
Forgive me if I should know this, but is there any opportunities for, like, grants or anything for this repair, or would this be something that we would be budgeting ourselves?
There's, I don't believe there's any maintenance funding for sports facilities, not to a municipality anyway.
Okay.
However, MSI would work on this, or some of those, those general grants that we receive.
Right, we could use, if we decided, okay.
What about that eight million they're put out, the government, is that just for new bills?
That's a good question, Madam Mayor. We'll check into that.
Because...
There's sports facility grant that they just...
Yeah.
Does our, I'm sorry, does our MPEC facility qualify under that new grant you're talking about, in any way?
It probably would, but that's not enough for...
No, 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 but...
That's eight million for the entire province.
True, but I'm feeling like every penny would help.
If we could, yeah, migrate it into a bank account. So could I have a motion to defer this to the budget meeting on Monday? Counselor Jessiman, all in favor? Carried. Request for decision for designated officers by law?
Madam Mayor, with some of the work we're doing on reviewing bylaws, it was noticed that the council had accepted the change in the title of the position that Director Phillips fills, from Finance Director of Finance to Director of Finance and Administration. We just need to make, change the designated officer bylaw to reflect that. So designated officers are generally assigned duties that are specified under the Act to the CAO. This is a further delegation or a council obligation, so generally, it's Finance and your municipal clerk are the two that have duties that are specifically required under the MGA.
Any questions from council? Could I have someone move first reading? Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried. Could I have someone move second reading? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. And could I have someone move third reading? There's no money involved.
No.
Oh, but unanimous.
Yeah, leave to move to third.
Okay, move for unanimous consent. Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. And finally, third reading. Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. The next one is the request for appointment of the assessor.
Madam Mayor, similar to the last one, this one actually came out of the assessment review that Municipal Affairs did, where it noted that we had appointed the firm, but not necessarily the auditor. So we need a bylaw to appoint Mr. Doddland as our audit, sorry, assessor, not auditor. The assessor must be appointed, according to Municipal Government Act, either by bylaw or resolution, and they must hold the powers of a designated officer, which again is duties as assigned under the Act.
Okay, could I, is there any discussion? Okay, could I have a motion, or a motion for first reading to appoint Bob Doddland? How do you say his last name? Doddland?
Yep.
Counselor Jessiman, all in favor? Carried. Second reading to appoint Bob Doddland. Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. And unanimous, someone to move for unanimous consent. Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried. And finally, could I have third reading for appointment of Bob Doddland as our assessor? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Request for decision for a town task force.
Madam Mayor, this is a rising report, again, from your committee of the whole, to create a community promotion task force. Municipal Cork Waters has put together a terms of reference for council's review.
Council, have you had a chance to look at the terms of reference? Counsel, have you had a chance to look at the terms of reference? Counsel Welke.
Um, where's the financial section here? We were discussing how this initiative would be funded. And I think it was...
In route.
Yeah, so, so, Madam Mayor, um, this, because this is a task force, it has no specific budget on its own, all of its recommendations come to Counsel. Um, unless Counsel provides it with a specific budget, which we can discuss at budget time.
Okay, um, so, oh, um, but this task force then, I guess, part of the discussion would be, would it work, would we work in conjunction with M F T A? Cause it looks like we're going to still, you know, maintain our relationship with McKenzie Frontier Tourism, so this would perhaps be high level specific, and maybe then the information related, or working with that other group as well? I see the some overlap, so...
Yes, go ahead.
The last, we, we were leaning more that we would stick with McKenzie County, and that, or, uh...
McKenzie.
With McKenzie Frontier Tourism.
Yes, yeah.
And not do this, or have this as well?
That's what I thought, we would talk to a steering, yeah.
I thought some of us had agreed that it would be good to have a task force, but that we would still work with, um, m, m, maybe I need a refresher on what we actually talked about.
Madam Mayor, you have appointed individuals to McKenzie Frontier Tourist Association, um, and Counsel has made no decision to end that relationship, so there is, we are still members of M F T A.
So, I guess it's whether do we, do we want, do we want both?
So, that, that is the question. Do we want both? Deputy Mayor.
I thought we discussed it, said Committee of the Whole, and maybe some of the funding was gonna come out of the Enrad Grant, um, but that we would do both? It's my memory.
Counsel Anderson.
Uh, yeah, that's my memory too, that, that we would do both. Um, I like the idea that this, uh, task force would deal specifically to the town at high level, so brochures, uh, you know, signage, um, things like that, that are specific to the town, um, and McKenzie Tourism would, you know, is, is the area, the whole McKenzie County, right? Involving all the communities and everything else, so, um, I like this idea, I think, um, you know, however we decide to fund it, I think it's, it's something we partially do anyway, um, so why not, um, get some members at large and involve, uh, some of our, uh, own, like, the, uh, restaurants and the, and the hotels and find out what they want and, specific to the town. That's my, and I thought that's what we had kind of discussed at the Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, and we discussed we would use partial Enrad Grants, as well as the promotional money. Um, this probably, um, is the time to revive the hotels, to see if they're interested in putting money into a tourism grant again.
Task for the task force?
Mm-hmm. Counsel Lambert.
He has my, he, we spoke about the same thing already, so...
Oh, sorry. Do you have another question?
No, I'm prepared to...
Okay, go ahead.
I'm, uh, prepared to move recommendation number one, that Counsel create the community promotion task force, mandate of focusing on the promotion of the town at high level as presented.
Okay, all in favor, carried.
Madam Mayor, uh, we'll reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and we'll begin advertising for, uh, members. Or did you want us to reach specifically out to any individuals in the hospitality industry?
I have no specific people.
Okay, we'll do that and we'll bring that back once we...
Does anybody else? Counsel Anderson?
I don't have anybody specific, but I think that we need to reach out to, like, to the hospitality part of it on its own, uh, restaurants on their own, uh, as well as the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Because some of them may not be members of the Chamber of Commerce, for whatever reason.
We can do some targeted, um, letters to those groups.
All right. Um, request for decision for audit services.
R S P.
Oh, did I get the, oh, yeah, R S D, sorry.
Madam Mayor, this is also a Horizon Report, if you have any questions, Director Phillips can answer those.
I have some questions. Um, Director Phillips, uh, is there a opt in or opt out of this, if you, if employees decide that they don't want to?
Um, well, right now, it's in our human resource policy that we contribute 10% of those, of that gross wage, so there is no opt out of that. Um, the only choice or flexible plan that we would have is if you wanted to, um, match and put more in, um, we do have that option, that you could put more into your R S Ps, but not that you can opt out of us contributing to your R S P.
Madam Mayor, um, th, this program does allow them to withdraw out of the program and put it into their own R S Ps at, at least once a year, or will we? Yeah.
Counsel, did you have your...
No, that answered my question.
Oh, yes.
I think this was my Horizon Report from the Committee of the Whole as well, I'll move the recommendation.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Those opposed, carried. Request for proposal for audit services.
Uh, Madam Mayor, this is also a Horizon Report from your Committee of the Whole, and this is to approve, um, the distribution of a R F P, a request for proposals for professional audit services.
Any questions? Who, is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Anderson?
This may have been my Horizon Report, I'm not sure, but I am prepared to make the motion, uh, to, whatever the, uh, the town, uh, alternative one, that the town issues a public request for proposals for, uh, professional audit services.
All in favor? Carried. Yes.
Just a question while we're on the topic.
Yes.
Um, while we're on the topic of the audit, uh, what's the update on the current situation?
Director Phillips?
Um, still the same update, um, we had a meeting scheduled for Friday, and, um, there was no, there was no meeting, so, um, we did reach out to the auditors again to just, um, they informed us that they would have some information to me this week for sample listings, um, that I've requested, so I'm hoping that they will send it this week, cause I did let them know that we do have, um, December 11th coming up soon for their council meeting that was our deadline, so, um, I believe that, he did say that he's gonna reach out again Friday, so this is, I'm hoping that they will meet the deadline Friday and have the meeting, but we are waiting for their sample listings still, so...
So, when you say that there was a meeting and then there wasn't, was it them that it was scheduled and they were not able to attend?
Yeah, I believe, um, yeah, the, we got an email that they were not able to attend, that there wasn't much for them to update, that they would just reach out to me this week and send sample listings, and then we would, um, meet again on Friday.
And, and when you say sample listings, does that mean there's still data that they want or need that we need to provide to them?
Yes.
And they haven't told us what that data is?
Yes, so, um, it's, a few weeks ago, um, after they received everything with T C A after our meeting, um, um, with the auditors, they are supposed to send over sample listings of that T C A, um, from the continuing schedule that they received, so then they can check that off on their, on their audit listing. Um, we've been waiting, I know that they were, confirmed that they were busy with their school division audits, but we're just waiting for the sample listings, so then we can provide that backup and that documentation to them, so then they can mark that off on the audit.
And is it anticipated that the data that they still need will be quick to compile?
Yeah, no, it definitely will be, normally it's just, um, they usually pull anything, let's say over 20,000, or, um, they will randomly look at, say, new assets that were put in, so we already have all of our projects and our assets, um, already in a binder that we just scan over to them, so we just zip file everything over to them, so we're just waiting on which files we would send over.
And this should be the last and final request for information from us?
Um, from my understanding, that's all that they needed to do, is that they just need to confirm the T C A information that, um, they needed these, these samples in order to confirm, confirm that information.
As the, as the final bit of...
For, from my understanding, for that, for, um, us getting into the draft and getting the draft financial statement, so we're just waiting for that listing, and if there was any other subsequent, um, information that they needed, so normally when the audit extends, they usually do, uh, all around check of like, subsequent information from, um, the bank's statements, let's say from, right now, we provided everything up until June and July for them, that they, that they marked off, so...
Of the previous year, of this year?
This year, of this year, yeah, so any subsequent after, so usually you have to have subsequent information for up to two months after, after the audit, just in case they're missing anything for deferred revenues or any contracts that, um, we might have entered into in 2022, but received funds afterwards.
So, but it almost sounds like they're requesting stuff well into 20, like halfway through 2023?
Yeah.
So then, are they, are we already ahead? I mean, I know we're putting this out for tender, possibly we'll have other people working on this, but should they not basically have, like, a lot of 2023 data already as well then?
Um, no.
Or where do we start for our next one?
So normally, um, when you start the audit, um, you're starting in about, like, end of February, March, so you're starting in March, so you do supply everything up until, um, the month after that you're, you're doing the audit, so even though we're at a year end of, say, December 2022, we still provide our subsequent bank statements for January, February, and March, when we start the audit.
Right.
So that, they can go through and, um, check our deferred, our accruals, and all of that, to make sure...
But you said they're asking for information right up into June and July of 2023 as well?
We've already provided all of that, yes, and they, and that's a norm, that's a normal, um, audit process, that if you're, if you're prolonging any of your, um, paperwork or documentation, you still have to provide subsequent for...
Current data.
Current data that you're in.
Okay, cause it seems like you've, or, like, we, or you felt that we've given all the information, and you see, and then they require more, and more samples, and more, so I'm wondering, once we provide all these samples, do then they look at that and then they say we need even, like, where does it, where does it end if we're, if we are actually this far into 2023? Where, where does it end for the, to, to get this 2022 audit?
So, right now, the samples that they would be pulling is anything that, um, they would have not pulled for the T C A, so any of our...
From 2022 even?
2022, so that's what they, that's what they would be asking for, that's the listings that they were sending over, cause they've already looked at all of our expense, all of our, um, liabilities, so right now, they're just at that T C A, from my understanding, that's the last sample listings that they would be sending us. We have already provided, um, samples for T C A, but now that they've looked everything over, um, and they're in agreeance that everything is, is balanced and reconciled from the meeting that we had last month, um, now we're just waiting for the sample listings to confirm all that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, 3.6, administrative requests.
Uh, Madam Mayor, this arose from your, um, Committee of the Whole, but sort of indirectly in a comment that was made about, uh, a little more thorough or focused review on the fire services or the emergency services provided by the town at high level. Um, Director Schmidt would like to extend an, an invitation.
So, Madam Mayor, the, uh, as, uh, requested last week by Counsel to meet, uh, have a meeting at the Fire Hall, uh, to take a look at the equipment and understand some of the challenges we're having in emergency services, um, you know, based on some of the questions the Counsel have had over the past couple of months, especially as we go into budget, administration suggesting we do this meeting before the budget session, or before the final budget passing in, uh, you know, on December 11th, so, uh, the, uh, the dates we do have available is the 30th, the 5th, and the 7th, or Tuesdays and Thursdays, so we can do it as early as this Thursday, or Tuesday or Thursday next week, if that suits Counsel, um, and we're planning on just having a presentation, tour, and availability for questions.
Counsel?
Not this Thursday.
No, I have a landfill.
I can't make this Thursday. I have 5 through 7, if I'm fine.
I'm not available the 5th. I could be available the 7th. Are you here the 7th? Are you available? Counsel Librian? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I can make 7.
Counsel Lambert? Welke?
Yep, 7.
Uh, Madam Mayor, does Counsel have a preferred time?
All these important questions. Do you wanna be at 6:00 or 7:00?
7:00.
You're talking...
Yes.
Cause I can go during the day.
I know you can.
Breakfast at 07:00.
By 7:00?
7:00 is good. 7:00 is, 7:00, 07.
We'll, we'll send an invitation, yeah.
Okay, request for money for Spirit of the North.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'll let, uh, the municipal clerk address this.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I apologize, I'm not as, uh, zippy here. Just need one minute to pull it up. Uh, so we've received a letter from Spirit of the North Community School, they were requesting funding for the replacement of their playground structures. Our C A O, McCaskill, had reached out to Mike Mcan, Mike McMahon, um, and we discovered that, uh, perhaps a better way to fund this than a one-time donation would be to enter in a kind of agreement, um, where yearly we could contribute a certain amount. Apparently McKenzie County already does this for the schools within their municipality, so this would be to look at contributing X amount for the town of high level and the schools within it.
So, the school division rec, or not the division, the Department of Education requisit, requisitions for an education fee every year, um, so, does none of that money go towards helping them put up play areas?
No, it's, it's not within the mandate, or g, the given mandate of a school division to provide playgrounds. Um, this school division does allocate some funding, uh, that it has on a rotating basis on a priority need, based on the age of structures. It used to be about 50,000 a year, but, uh, speaking with Mr. McMahon, they may be looking at increasing that because of the escalating cost of these play structures. Um, so, yeah, and that was, uh, he had brought to my attention that McKenzie County gives 25,000 annually, there would be, I believe, 8... There would be, I believe, eight school playgrounds in McKenzie County. There are two in high level.
Yeah, I counted them. Um, so, I mean, like, 22,000 or whatever he put is a huge ask of our community, for two playgrounds when we put lots of playgrounds in our community. I don't know what the other communities in McKenzie County do, but I'm not, I'm not against it, but I don't think that we should be putting a huge amount every year in playground. Counsel Welkey?
Um, is the high school in, uh, Flomack considered one then, one playground?
There's not really a playground behind high level public. There was a swing set at one time and a small structure, but it's, it's the two big structures between Flomack and Spirit of the North.
Okay, so the high school, is that going to be main? Yeah, there's...
Volleyball court.
Volleyball? There's, but yeah, there's structures there. Are they planning on, are they not there anymore?
I think they've been removed.
They were removed.
Oh, it's been a while. I don't play over there anymore. Um, so too, yeah, I'm, I, I'm kinda for, uh, the initiative. Um, maybe we have to hash out the dollar amount, but I'm, uh, I'm in, I'm in favor of, uh, kind of matching what happens in the region.
So, I sorta hashed it out in my mind, eight in the county, and they get 22,000, so that means two here, we would put in like 4,000 if we were gonna go what McKenzie County supplies. It hurts my heart, though, because we have huge play structures in our community.
I, I don't know if you'd be able to answer this or not, I'm just a little curious, 'cause Spirit of the North School, they have one of the newest, uh, structures built?
It's, it, my understanding is that it's partially new. So, there was, about 10 years ago, I think they replaced a good chunk of it, but there's some of the old wooden structure that I believe is what they're trying to replace.
Yeah, they have like a whole separate one behind it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I don't know. I guess with this, if we went ahead with this fund, would it go into, like, a group fund to, you know, build something new at every other school? Because, I mean, there isn't one at the high school anymore. The one at the FMCS has been there since I was in grade three. I mean, it's, it's been a long time, so, um, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure, unless it depends on where the money is really going, right?
I, I would suggest, Counsel Lambert, that if council does, that it'd be dedicated to the schools in high level. Um, the, the advantage to us is then we don't have to inspect them or maintain them. But we, but the mayor is correct, we have a lot of, lot of very large structures that, that this community has, that some other communities don't, uh, the school structure being their main one.
Counsel Anderson?
Uh, I'm in, I'm in agreement that we, as, as, uh, the town of high level do spend an awful lot of money on our, our own play areas and parks and recreation centers and whatever. Um, but I did the calculations, and if we did it on the same basis as, as a county, which is $25,000 for eight, that's $3,125, uh, that, that we would contribute in, in the same fashion for dollars. If it was dedicated to the community schools within the town of high level, um, I could probably see fit to, to work with that kind of a sum, um, but not $25,000.
Counsel Welkey?
I guess just to add to why I'm for it, and I agree with the, the pricing, like, say, like around the $8,000 mark, but I feel that in our municipality, our schools' playgrounds probably, um, put up with a lot of wear and tear, more so than other places, um, and not just from the school kids, especially if we're, um, going to promote ourselves as, you know, an evacuation center and, and hub. Uh, we are a hub, um, I think it's, uh, uh, okay, or fair to ask that, uh, that we help contribute to some of those players. And I know we put a lot into our own parks, but I think the school playgrounds are probably the hot, most highly used, and it would be, uh, not just, you know, our own kids using them, um, especially throughout the summer months.
Counsel Lebrun?
I'm in agreeance with us running a similar program to what the county has. Um, like, the numbers you guys are, are passing around seem about right. Uh, like, Jan was just, or Counsel Welkey was just saying, the Spirit of the North School especially, that park is packed, especially during the summer with ball and hawk, or soccer running out of that area there. Those, those parks are very heavily used by the kids outside of school time, so I think that we should make a contribution to them.
So, are you suggesting, counsel, then, that we set up a budget line? Every year we put in a certain amount of money for the playgrounds of high, of Fort Familiens School Division? Someone wanna make that motion then?
Madam Mayor, do you want to just make a motion to defer to the budget meeting?
Sure. Defer to the budget, that's the easy motion.
I can make that motion.
Counsel Welkey? All in favor? Carried. The mix report, the mixed report.
Oh, my X.
Yeah, my X.
Okay, so, uh, magnetic ion exchange. So, this is the testing that was done at the water plant over the last year. I believe it began in February. It, uh, as you can see from the report, they did a couple of tabletops, and they did a larger study. Um, the engineer is recommending that we proceed with the installation of my X at the water treatment plant. It will reduce some of the turbidity and organics that are found in our water source. Um, and the, although it's not going to be a lot, it's not gonna be the fix to our water issue, that will be a supply issue that, uh, we'll have to deal with eventually. Um, the estimate that I got from the, the engineer is that it would probably save us half of the chemicals that we currently put into the water treatment system. So, that's $150,000, uh, worth of granulated activated carbon, we'd cut that in half, and the aluminum, liquefied aluminum sulfate, the alum, it would be about half of that too, and rumor informed me that we spend about 25,000 a month on that. So, the savings are fairly substantial on an annual basis.
Can you run the numbers? How long would it take, $8 million?
Well, hopefully we get 50% of that from the government, but still, 2.3 is a pretty big ask.
Mm-hmm. So, this would cut our costs, but we're entering into a water-for-life, which we're hoping for a different source of water. Is it worth it, in this 5 million?
It's, it's quite possible that a regional water supply could be years in the future. I mean, the study will be done next year, um, but it, it could, the magnitude we're looking at of piping from the Peace River, um, that could be a very long-term project.
Counsel Lambert?
So, it's in the report, it says it would be a interim solution, is how long would it really, like, is there a timeline on how long it lasts for, or...
Sorry, what they're referring to is that it's, it's not gonna be that magic bullet, uh, because of the higher organic content in Futter Lake that we're current. So, this, this will help mitigate the organics we're pulling into our water supply. The, the longer-term solution would be to use, uh, settled river water, take the silt out of it and pump it up, because then you're almost dealing with pure water coming in. So, the interim is until we get a better water source.
Okay. So, there's no actual, there's no timeline on how long we can actually use it for?
No.
Okay.
Counsel Welkey?
Um, does this have any consumables, this system?
It's, it's, it's a resin, it's a resin bead that is backwashed with a brine, so you wash the, it, it traps your organics, and then you wa, you backwash.
And wash the system and reuse it.
Yeah.
So, did you say 150,000 on one aggregate and 25,000 a month on the other thing?
Yeah.
So, are, so about $450,000 a year?
Our, yeah, our budget's around 40,000 a year in chemicals.
But, but half of it, well, like, we'd be able to cut that in half.
Yeah.
So, then, my calculation shows if we got half the funding, that maybe this 2.5 million would be paid off in 10 years of, in savings, about 10 years?
On a venture, yeah. Or wait...
Well, no, I mean, in the savings, like, uh, if we were to save $225,000 a year?
On a straight line, yeah.
Saving.
Deputy Mayor?
So, uh, commend administration for continuing to look at, uh, long-term solutions for our great water supply. Um, I think at this point, it's just an application. I don't think the town can afford to do the full shot if we don't get the funding, so with the deadline coming up for, um, the funding application on Thursday, um, I would suggest that we, uh, at least put in the, for the funding. Doesn't mean it necessarily goes to the... I agree with the C O that, you know, if a pipeline from the Peace River is a long-term solution, you know, that's, um, that's a hundred million dollar project.
Mm-hmm.
Even if we got 90% funding between the two municipalities, our share would still be, you know, double what this is, um, and, you know, it could be 10 or more years in, in the future. Um, my concern is always if, um, the province comes up with new water standards and we're currently not able to meet them, we don't have something like this in place, we're gonna be feet to the fire to do something way more expensive than it. So, I would suggest that I'm prepared to move that we at least make the application for the funding, and then we can always turn it down or send it back if the, uh, pipeline study comes back with something else.
Counsel Welkey?
Is the, is the best that we can hope for, for funding half the project?
Yeah, the, the, there's, there's an algorithm they use, but just popping in our, our numbers, it's about 51% actually, is what our population works out to in the algorithm.
Yes.
Is this one of those applications where if we have a regional partner, the funding goes from 50 to 75 or 90?
No, that's water-for-life.
So, can this be also funded through water?
No, because we don't have a regional partner on this.
Okay, but...
No, I see what you're saying, yeah.
The D N A, if we made this a regional application?
They don't count as a partner yet, though, do they?
No.
Well, the province had said on the one application that they would consider them as a local partner.
They haven't put any mechanisms in place, and when we talked about the, the sewer, what the province told us is that rather than, um, giving the 50% and then applying the ISK money, that they would take the ISK money off, which of course means that we get less grant money. Um, so, there's no, we have not been informed that there's a mechanism to use First Nation as a partner.
But this would be another avenue to sort of push that and see if we can get a poster trial type situation where...
We could make the application and then go to the minister afterwards. Yeah, that would be Minister Dresch.
What minister was it that told us that?
Uh, I believe that was Ms. Minister MacIver. He said that that had been put in and made a lot of sense, um, I believe it was before this government.
Counsel Lambert?
Um, if approved, what, is there a timeframe on construction, like, how long it would take to implement?
Likely you're looking at a year for your engineering. Uh, we'd, if, if it can be done with inside the confines of the current water plant, that'd make it a lot easier to do in the wintertime, but when I spoke with, uh, the engineer today, they figured that by the time we hear about the grant, get the engineering done, we're probably looking at 2025 before we construct.
Any more discussion? Motion from Deputy Mayor to move forward with the grant application? All in favor? Carried. Um, correspondence for information? Do you wanna receive it for information, please, somebody? Counsel Jessmone? All in favor? Carried. So, that is it for the public portion of our meeting. We'll now move into in camera, the motion from Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Carried.